It's one of our, of the missions of the PMRID.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back and look at the engineer's report because I pulled that mission from that paragraph. I know security patrol is a named enlisted expenditure, but I think safety should be the first word.
And that whole assessment came for that. And that whole assessment was heavy on that, you know. So, safety was, is very important. But I don't want them to think that we're not, it's not our focus because I think that's one of our big focuses.
And your second point on page eighty-two, you know, I tried to stress that on the capital improvement projects page, that the funding just isn't enough to handle the safety, the clean, and then the third part, which is the infrastructure repairs. So that's, that's where we're gonna have to start a conversation on how we're gonna find that funding.
Exactly. And that's part of our, our whole, what you call that, even part of the strategies that we're trying to, that we wanna work with in facing us, is we have old parks. I mean, and we need to find a way to access funding so that we can put some reserves aside for main, and also for maintenance because the general fund is already going beyond the sixteen percent. That normally is the benefit share here. And so, that's one of the, that's one of the charges that we're asking staff to help us, find options, find opportunities, and let us know how we can do it. Because we have had residents that come up here and say, you know, we wanna help, we wanna participate, we want to have, you know, our parks look a little bit more like the newer developments, which we can't help. You know, a new development's a new development, and their park is obviously newer. Okay? So I appreciate that page.
Yeah, and you know, again, it speaks to the reserve study that was done, so we know exactly what we're dealing with. And, you know, the price tag, if I recall, it was like fourteen million dollars if we wanted to replace and exchange and repair everything in our parks. And, you know, it's a hefty price tag. We're only collecting eight hundred thousand dollars a year for this assessment, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Caddell, for your report. At this point, do I hear a motion?
Um, what is our move?
Page seventy-four.
Okay, I will move that the Board of Directors accept the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District PMRID Oversight Committee Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2014 and 15 with the, with amendment to add safety.
We have a motion with an amendment with Director Reyes. Do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
I have a second by Secretary Lineback. All those in favor?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's move on to item H two C.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Item H two C is a ballot vote for Sacramento Lafco Special District Commissioner, Office Number Six. The Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission has an opening for a special district commissioner. You recall, several meetings ago, our Board of Directors nominated Chair Danzel to be included on that ballot, and he has been. There are six candidates. Please note, the district can only vote for one. The term of this office is from January first, two thousand and sixteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And the recommended motion is there for your review. Thank you.
I move the Board of Directors' vote for Brian Danzel for Sacramento Lafco Special District Commissioner, Office Number Six.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Secretary Lineback. I have a motion, a second by Director Reyes. All those in favor?
Director Yearwood?
Aye. I'd like to see a picture next time with your resume, though.
Next. Thank you.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
I guess aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
I probably should have. Motion passes.
Good luck. Good luck. I mean, you're there representing us. We hope you get it.
Go ahead and walk the district.
It'll be nice to have a Parks and Rec district down there versus a water district for the first time in a long time. Thank you. Let's move on to item H two D.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. The final item for my department this evening, item H two D, is not an action item. It's just to inform the Board of what's coming. It's to review proposed MOU with Sacramento County for election administration services. Sacramento County does provide election services for the district, and we received notification that the department is considering a memorandum of understanding, which is intended to define expectations and roles for all the entities involved. This proposed program went to the Board of Supervisors on October twenty-seventh, and the Board did approve the MOU program. And we anticipate to be contacted shortly by the county with an invitation to join this MOU, which will, of course, be tailored specifically to our district needs. And the fourth new document that I delivered to the dais since the board package was posted was indeed that notification from the county. So that's for your review. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Any questions on last item there?
I have a question. Does the district staff have a preference with regard to receipt of payment of candidate statements?
Typically, we receive payment at the district.
The county is now asking districts to permit them to collect those?
Correct. We also received a notification that that will be a possibility in the coming election.
So I'm just asking your preference in that, in that matter.
I know my preference is to go one, one-stop shop, but that's my preference as a candidate. But what the district's choice is, is...
I would say from a, actually, there's a two-sided there, depending on how you pay your candidate statement. If you pay it to the district directly, there's immediate notification to the district that somebody is running for their Board of Directors. Secondly, if you pay by check, the district will hang on to that in case there isn't sufficient interest in the position for it to get on the ballot. And then the candidate simply gets their check handed back to them. If you go into the county and make that payment on the candidate's statement, I'm gonna guarantee you that check is gonna get deposited, and then you're gonna have to chase them for the refund if the statement doesn't appear on the ballot.
Probably ninety days.
Just a perspective.
Very good. I will rethink my statement then because I forgot during a recall or a recount how that works. So yes, I will have to, I will have to say I'd rather pay the district. But I do like just going one place and paying for that, so. Okay, let's move on to item I, presentations. There are none listed at this time. So moving on to item J, comments by staff on non-agenda items. J one, department head reports.
Yes, Chair Danzel, in front of you have park, or I'm sorry, department head reports from every area. If you have any questions, I'm sure staff is happy to answer them.
Director Yearwood, we're gonna start with you. We'll go down the line and just... Director Reyes, on park, our park planning and development?
Yeah, the, my question is with regard to the bids that were received for the aquatic. And so, staff had opened, was able to go through that with representatives, contractors, Chris Boyer from the City of Ranch Cordova, Public Works, right? And a lady from the, Carol Kraus from the Blue Marvins. And so, what, what, what I'm seeing here is that at this time, there are two of the three bids. Am I right?
There were two bids.
There were two bids. Okay, so tell me about it.
Okay, so they were two bids. They were very close in price.
Price.
And we've been doing an evaluation, and we forwarded our evaluation to the attorney. The attorney is currently crafting a letter to the unsuccessful bidder. And that'll be sent out as soon as I receive that from the attorney, and then we'll be, so, so we'll be bringing our recommendation on December sixteenth. And I'm not, I'm not gonna state at this time which bidder that is until the attorney, we've notified the other bidder, the unsuccessful bidder.
And, and what we're seeing are the bids were just under three million?
Correct.
Okay, and we had initially talked about, what, two-point-six, or was it three-point?
Two-point-seven was the, was the amount, the last amount that we had looked at.
Okay. So it's not too far away. That's my question. Just clarification. Thank you.
Secretary Lineback, any questions on park planning? Vice Chair Sloan?
Yeah, the Salmon Falls turf replacement project, we've got a ribbon cutting coming December, what is it, fifth?
Third.
Third? Are we, are we notifying the, well, it's gonna be ten in the morning, so I don't know who's gonna be there besides us. But who else are we inviting for that?
From the city, right? Or county?
County.
That's county. County. Dawn?
Thank you.
Is that within the, the area of Natoli? Supervisor Natoli? Or not?
I believe that is.
Yeah, so let's make sure, let's make sure that...
I'm looking at the map, trying to draw my other lines in there, and I'm going, yeah, that is, that is Supervisor Natoli's area, so.
Yeah, it, it would be nice to have them. Is there a homeowners group there? No? Okay. But really, people that have assisted and participated, you know.
Okay, let's...
I gotta, I wanna go back about that. I had a question.
Yes, sir.
On this park, are we gonna put any kind of signage there or anything explaining what we did?
Yeah.
Yes, there was a very small sign put up during construction, but staff has been talking about how to get a bigger sign. It's a permanent sign that explains that it was a turf replacement project.
Okay. I took a sneak peek. It looks great.
Great. Thank you, Director.
How much water that will, is gonna save in maintenance?
Let's move on to the department head for recreation. Director Yearwood? Director Reyes?
Keep up the good work. You know, I'm, I'm pleased to see you, both Director Lineback and Yearwood were saying there was a lot of people, and you're talking about fifteen hundred. That's, that's really a lot of people there, so keep up the good work.
Secretary Lineback? Vice Chair Sloan?
Well, I just was a little taken back by some of the comments about the senior center, so maybe there could be some follow-up on what's going on out there, the issues.
Definitely. Yes.
That's it.
Thank you. Let's move on to communications. Director Yearwood? Director Reyes?
Nothing right now.
Secretary Lineback? Vice Chair Sloan? Ms. Vivian, you're off the hook.
She's like, I got up for nothing. Park Services, Mr. Dobbs.
Director Yearwood? On Park Services?
Is that where we talked about the beautiful paint job on those bollards over at Larchmont? Nice, they look great. I checked them out when I was checking out the other park. Thanks.
Well, welcome.
That's all I got.
Director Reyes?
Looks like you're working, you and your, your team is working, doing a lot of mainline repair, right?
That's correct.
Is that because of roots of trees or just old mainline pipes? It's time to get it fixed?
It is a combination of what you're talking about. There's everything from settling of the soil to the age of the, the lines themselves. I've got some pictures of trees growing around irrigation system, components that we had to go ahead and cut out and redo again, so. It's been quite a bit of work.
Right. Secretary Lineback?
Yeah, just really minor, but when I was reading it, under special projects, you wrote Adolfo Salas and crew removed over twenty X grasses.
Those are large clumps, large clumps of grass. That's, that was my new, one of my newest supervisor's abbreviations. I didn't catch it. But that, that's what he meant, was large clumps. We divided them, and we used them again in another park.
Okay. And then, under the tree removal section there, are these dead trees you're removing?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Sloan, for Park Services?
Yeah, the bathrooms at Rosemont Park, the locks were, or damaged vandalism? Or they just didn't work, or what? Those ones automatically shut down at dusk, I mean, at dark?
Well, we have security come in to lock the doors, but sometimes people go in and they will damage the locks. In that instance, they try to break in, and we had to go ahead and replace, replace the locks. They were no longer any good. They were beaten up with a hammer, it looked like.
Weren't these the type that locked automatically, I thought? No?
No.
No, we're not at that point yet.
And I guess, so you painted the blue and the yellow bollards out there?
Yes, we got that done the day after, received a request.
Okay. And then I guess you did some repair at the Rosemont Little League. I was curious what that was.
Rosemont Little League, we had actually worked with Recreation Department, and they also worked with the Little League Group, made some requests. We were able to comply with a few of those requests, like repairing the fence. That's our, our structure to begin with. Some of the building structures out there, that is basically ours. And then we also worked on the field to go ahead and check out the irrigation systems.
So building structures would be the dugouts?
It'd be the dugout itself.
All right, that's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sloan. Next, Ms. Andrea White with Human Resources. Director Yearwood? Director Reyes?
Yeah?
Secretary Lineback? Vice Chair Sloan? Let's move on to, can we skip him? Finance? We've already heard him tonight.
What?
Director Yearwood, anything for Mr. Caddell on finances? Director Reyes? Secretary Lineback?
Not very long.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Numbers are up or down up there at golf course?
Numbers of the golf course. We brought in substantial, we're, in July and August, we're almost a hundred thousand in revenue each month, which is great. We came in a little shorter last month, at seventy thousand, so. We're on par overall, but I was a little disappointed last month. Yeah, but we weren't closed because of rain or anything like that.
Oh, man. And the foot golf, foot golf's going pretty well?
Foot golf is going great. We actually had a few pros out there that compete internationally, and they're taking a good, hard look at our course. And so they came out, and I know Jacob Mard out there has done a great job telescoping it and, and getting a lot of likes through that. So we're getting quite a bit of exposure out there for foot golf, yeah.
Director Reyes?
I just wanted to ask you, I was gonna ask you about this event tent, you know, for banquet and entertainment venues, and I see that it's definitely needed. There's... So, so tell us a little bit about what, what you're looking at here.
We, we, as a team, are looking at ways to bring revenue to that course. And what we noticed, what we're lacking compared to other golf courses, is a banquet facility. And so people that wanna hold tournaments or large gatherings, what we lack is space, covered space. And what we found, what a lot of golf courses do, is they get temporary or even permanent white tents and set them up somewhere on their golf course. And so we took a look at what would be a good spot to, to put a tent, what the revenues potentially could be with that, and what the costs are gonna be. So right now, we're going through that analysis right now, what the cost would be. But the potential for revenue, looking at what other golf courses are doing, it would be a major attraction, so.
So when are you going to be coming up with some kind of an option, a recommendation, a proposal?
Right. So planning right now is putting together multiple options on sites, different components of what it would be, what would suffer if, if we put it in certain areas. So they're gonna come up with options and then cost estimates on each one. So we'll bring that to the Board hopefully sooner than later. But we don't have a timeline on that, on that yet.
Will this tent be something that we would rent, or we would own?
That's a good question. We've researched that, and I believe the best course of action would be to purchase. To rent one, it, it's costly to have, and, and plus it's take-down, it's, it's, it's a pain, it seems like, to rent a tent, where I think it would be wise to purchase. I think it'd pay for itself in probably three events. And from what I hear and understand, we, we could have tournaments lined up, weddings maybe, funerals.
What about cooling systems or heating systems that go along with that?
Yeah, again, planning is looking into all the logistics on, on location for the wind, the air. But it would probably have some kind of system in there to allow for air. We're, we're looking at a pretty large tent, like a forty by sixty or forty by eighty. Yeah. So it's, it's exciting. Great. Do you like pour cement slab or something for it? Is that the plan? Paver stones or concrete? Okay. Yeah. So if we feel like it's a more of a permanent solution, we'll go with the concrete route. Otherwise, probably paver stones, yeah.
But you haven't picked a location yet?
No. Yeah, we're trying to figure out the side pieces of land that we own to see if we could utilize that. But we realized the views weren't very well. It needs to be on the course somewhere. So we're, we're taking a good look around the holes, especially in the front area, near the range where it could be located.
Thank you, Mr. Caddell.
Right in the middle of the range.
And probably, kind of like, are you closer to the cafe or so? Because if, you know, breakfasts, birthday parties, I mean, all these things that...
Well, what we currently have are two ponds, one that's, that's used and one that is infiltrated with the, what are they called? The tails? Tules. And so, we need to completely find out about the environmental impact of, of covering that up and utilizing that space right there next to Hole Ten as a possible location. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's move on to item J two, District Administrator's Report. His report is here. I don't know, Mr. Rodems, do you have any to add to this?
I do have an item to add to my report, just as a point of information. We've talked to staff and him working on issues in regards to the Mills Station Building. As the, as most of the Board knows, we are contracted to manage that building with the Regional Transit. But we find that, in essence, we are managing this for other agencies and their uses. And as such, are taking the act of probably turning this back over to the RT. It really is not a viable space for us to manage on a regular basis. There are challenges with this building. A lot of them having to do with during our time of use, while we're in operation, that parking lot is used as a stationary lot for regional transit. So daytime events and early afternoon events really aren't feasible, mostly evening events, and we're finding other agencies are utilizing that space on a regular basis. With, with that, the, the city is also looking at a renovation project. So the object of us relinquishing this in hopes that someone like the CCC or the City Ranch Cordova would take that on for their specific use, it's looking like the programming of that building really is more going to be along the lines of history and/or art center type use out of the purview at this time of the district. So, we're following the notification protocol, and I have a letter here that I will sign and send to Regional Transit informing them of our intent to vacate or discontinue that contract as a thirty-day provision. And we will start that discussion with them.
I, when I, when, Brian, were you there with me at that time when we attended the Measure H?
Yes, ma'am.
Presentation? And very much so, the City of Ranch Cordova was authorizing their, their staff. They already approved about close to eight hundred thousand...
Dollars, yeah.
Dollars to, to renovate the downstairs or whatever. And so, of course, there was mention about, you know, who was, that the park was the one that was, right now, taking care of renting it out. But it's, it's interesting, but, and that's definitely what they would like to do. They'd like to see about taking it over because they're going to put in eight hundred or more thousand to renovate it.
Didn't the park do just the upstairs?
Well, the downstairs isn't viable right now for anything.
That's what I'm talking about, the downstairs use. Would, they want the park to run that too?
No. Currently, we only have access to the upstairs use of the facility. And we were trying to schedule things like receptions and birthdays and things like that in there. Really, what we're finding is that it's being used more for community, community use, such as the orchestra and, and other, other units like that, that are basically, what really what we're doing is a lot of coordinating through the Cordova Community Council. And as such, really, the, the amount of time and energy it takes for us to do that in comparison to the revenue stream that exists is really nonexistent. So, and the reality is, it'd probably be better handled through either the CCC or the city in that fashion as they do have designs on changing that space. So what this does is relinquish it so that the RT can have those discussions directly with those entities.
Correct. I think that's a good idea.
Anything else for Administrator Rodems on his District Administrator Report?
I, I just have one question. You're, you have regular phone conferences with Beth Testa. She is the media consultant?
Yes, she's still on contract with us, finishing up projects. Beth and I have, have always had weekly updates. Those are a few and few. She's doing more of those with, with Vivian. I just touched base to see if there's anything else that I can provide. Most of the discussion, if not almost all of it, is happening through Vivian at this time.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Chair Danzel?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a note to provide an update to the Board and public regarding reestablishing the city two-by-twos. I received a communication from the city clerk this week. I don't know if Administrator Rodems would like to speak on that.
Yes, since the, since the twenty-eighth of September, when we understood the city had their meeting and direction was given, we have been in constant contact with the clerk. As, as Board knows, the clerks of both organizations are the keepers of the calendar. And as such, regardless of what anyone else says to us, we still have to wait for the clerk to be given direction to schedule. We had been waiting for that direction, and it finally arrived last week, actually. So we have been checking with the clerk on a regular basis. I think you folks, even in your last meeting, it was kind enough to have Mindy actually serve in place of Danielle in her absence on vacation. And, and once again, we're in constant communication along those lines. So we did finally receive that information. I did have communications with, finally with Cyrus, also after the twenty-eighth, for the first time last week via email, to affect that schedule, which is going to occur in two thousand and sixteen. The city themselves have asked to push that off to two thousand and sixteen to start those meetings. We have confirmed that we will have it agendized two-by-two, starting in January, and that we will follow the Brownac regulations on the posting of such meetings.
And I would have to say the reason they're probably pushing it back is next month they elect their new mayor, and they'll have to sit through all their committees on how they're gonna do it, just as we are going to, so.
They already elected their new mayor.
I know, but they, they have till next, the end of next month to decide who they're going on each, each committee, so.
Which is going to be the same case with us, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That's good.
And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions in regards to my report. Anything? Hearing none. Let's move on to item K, communications.
Item K, once again, for your review, you have articles, correspondence, and public outreach. We have one email, last four design workpieces, and one newsletter. Would you like me to move on to L?
Yes, let's move on to item L, feature agenda, feature agenda items, calendar events.
So on November twenty-fourth, we have slated a Tuesday informational board meeting. I will be absent during that week. I think it has been suggested that you cancel that meeting at this point in time. If there are, there are items that we may wanna cover, but we would do that probably in a work session in December if the Board chooses to do so. It is Thanksgiving week, so.
Yeah, most people will be traveling.
And I will not be, I will not be able to attend that either because I have some appointments with the Veterans Affairs that, on that day, that I cannot, unfortunately.
Then I would suggest that we go ahead and cancel that meeting. It is an informational board meeting. It's not an action time. And so, and I will look forward to the work... board meeting. It's not an action time. And so, and I will look forward to the workshop, work sessions so that we can get ourselves caught up in other, you know, plans. Now, clerk of the board, were you going to talk to us and tell us about, is it this December is when we're supposed to be electing our new chair?
Yes, I was going to update the board on upcoming agenda items.
Okay.
So, Ms. Jones, do we need to make this, and do we need to vote on L one to cancel that meeting, or is it just direction of the?
No, just direction of the board.
Direction of the board. Any, any qualms to not, so we will cancel, cancel that meeting? Thank you. Let's move on to item L two.
Item L two is just a reminder that we have a regular board meeting, and the date is December 16th, 2015. Also slated is to appoint PMID Oversight Committee members. Item L three, once again, CRPD Board and District Administrator, calendar November through December. And we will update that and make adjustments for the, the move of the board to add additional time to that calendar.
There is.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Chair Danzel. The first item, there are two updates to board policies that we need to make. The first is regarding officer selection. So we will be doing that at the December meeting. And then at the same meeting is when you will be electing the new officers. So that will be coming. And then the other part of the board policies that need to be updated is regarding the standing committees, because at this time, the two-by-two with the city is not on our list of standing committees. So that will have to be added to the list in order for whoever is chair to make the appointments come January. So please look for these items at our December meeting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Jones.
And I have one calendar...
Yes, ma'am.
...question brought to me by Chair Danzel. The county is offering a training on December 2nd for the new electronic Form 700. And Chair Danzel, I don't know if you want to make the recommendation?
My recommendation is I will not be able to be there. I don't know if anybody else will be able to be there. Director Yerwood, I know you're, you're stuck with work. My recommendation is that we send the clerk of the board to get the training, and then the clerk train us at, at a later, more convenient time for us. Is that?
I second that motion. That would be better.
But is that what the wishes of the board is? You're, you're going to be there too, so.
So that's great. And I think we should...
Fair enough.
All right, yeah.
So, Vice Chair Sloan, you have any?
That's good.
I know that a lot of those, like, when you do the resale taxes, now you do it online. So a lot of that stuff is pretty self-explanatory. So it basically is just running you through how to, if you're not, if you're not savvy to the, sit through the programs or using a PDF or something, you're just like filling something out, and it calculates everything for you, so.
But any qualms about not going to the meeting, having Ms. Jones train us at a later date? Ms. Jones, the direction of the board is that we'd like you to take the training and train us at a more convenient date for us. Thank you.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, let's go to item N M, excuse me, closed session.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. We have two items in closed session this evening. Item M one is the liability claim pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.95. Claimant is Joshua Norquist. Agency claimed against is the Cordova Recreation and Park District. Item M two is liability claim pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.95. Claimant Kevin Johnson. Agency claimed against Cordova Recreation and Park District.
Thank you. At this time...
And confirm that I do not believe it is that Kevin Johnson.
Well, he's been making the news a lot this time.
We will... For coming. We will recess to closed session of the community boardroom at 9:04.